Hi, good evening. It's January the 18th. I'm Kristy Boudreau and this is the Hatfield School Committee's January 2023 monthly business meeting. And we're calling this to order. It is 7:06. It's been a busy night at Town Hall. So I would like to thank the committee for joining us and administration. And we have a special guest with us virtually tonight. Hello, Ms. LaFleur. Nice to see you. Can you hear us? Excellent. I'd like to go ahead and get through the first five items on our agenda and then move Ms. LaFleur up for the first reading. But if we can quickly go ask if there's any public comment. There's no one with us in the room. I don't see anyone online, so we will move on without public comment. And to kick off with a mission moment. And so does anybody have a mission moment they wanted to share from this week?
I do.
Excellent. Mission moment.
I want to acknowledge how much I appreciated probably the rest of the committee. The events that happened at Smith Academy yesterday and the communication that came to the school committee and to the families was so appreciated that it was practically in real time. Everything happened within an hour, all the notifications. I just really wanted to acknowledge and appreciate the communication. I did have a phone call later from a parent, so it was very helpful to have been in the loop of what was going on. So that's my mission moment to acknowledge and appreciation the fantastic communications.
Thank you. And nurturing our invested community.
Yes.
Awesome. Any other mission moments anyone wants to share?
I didn't find it. I saw that. Would that be okay to do it that way?
Sure. You're always welcome to. You know, anytime things are going well, we're happy to see them in any place they show up on the agenda. So I'll move on to the consent agenda. This is the minutes from our December meeting. Any reason to pull this off? So moved, all approved on that, on those minutes. And we have Hadley Saino back with us as our student representative. And so we turn it to you for your report.
Okay. We've been great at Smith Academy. We had a great winter break and it's been really nice getting back into the swing of things again. Our term, our grades closed last Friday and we had a bunch of home basketball games last week for the boys and the girls. And the seasons are kind of coming to an end, so make sure you're looking at the schedule and catching the last few home games for both of them, but their seasons are going great. The Student Council had a very successful breakfast on Friday morning, so we really appreciate all of the support from the community for that and we'll be having another one soon, so be on the lookout. Our council is also preparing for some very fun regional and state Student Council events in the next coming months. And we've started to announce birthdays of students over the intercom in the morning and they get a special treat as well. So those are just kind of the new updates from Smith Academy, but things are going great and we're excited for second half of the year to start, so.
Kind of special treat do they get?
To be in after school.
Good, good catch.
Glad to hear it.
It's great to hear that there's such a fostering community in the school. That's awesome. And with everyone's consent, I know Principal Petra has a curriculum update which Ms. LaFleur is here for. And if we can shift and do that first and free up the rest of her evening, that would be great. Are you ready to take over? Did you want to set this up?
Sure. Yeah. Looking at my notes. So one of the things that we noted at the end of the year last year was that we needed to continue to do some work around bullying prevention. And with the help of some funds that were left over from last year, Ms. LaFleur, our nurse, Jean Hobby, ordered this particular curriculum to be implemented with our students in grades K to six. Even though this curriculum only goes up to grade five, we felt that this year it wouldn't hurt our sixth graders since they've not heard this curriculum already to have this be implemented. So we have begun training some of the staff, but I've invited Nicole here to talk a little bit more about, because she's also helping spearhead this and supporting teachers, so.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to rearrange your schedule and give me some time to talk about the Second Step Bullying Prevention Program. And this is going for, as Melissa already said, you know, last year Melissa and I and many staff were doing lessons regarding bullying and the difference between bullying and conflict, as well as being a bystander versus an upstander, and really feeling that we needed to have a research-based, consistent program to be able, or curriculum to be able to use this year. So we were fortunate enough to get the kit. As Melissa said, there is a, we have one kit for kindergarten, one for first grade, one for second grade, one for third grade, one for fourth grade. And fifth grade, we have one and it's shared with fifth and sixth grade. And then?
Uh-oh. Melissa, can you wave to tell her? We can't hear her.
We can't hear you. Can you hear us?
Is it me?
Oh, no.
Okay. Yes.
Better?
Yep. Now we got you.
Did you hear that last part about being able to access? Any, really any of the materials in the physical kit can be accessed online. And as Melissa said, there is a training component for us administrators. There's a training component for all staff because it doesn't matter what your role is. Every staff needs to be able to understand the, you know, the aspects of recognizing, reporting, refusing. What is the difference between bullying and a conflict? What do you do if you get a bullying report? Because there are the eyes and ears outside at recess in the cafeteria as well. And then each teacher has an online training that they do. So we're in the mix of that. Each classroom has a poster that says, it's kind of big, I can show you. I just took that, but. It's very big, colorful for the students. It says, "Help Stop Bullying: Recognize." Is it mean on purpose? Am I able to get it to stop? And then report, it shows a student talking to an adult, "I need to report bullying." And then refuse, it shows someone saying, "Stop it," and standing up. So each of the classrooms will have that. And the main parts is needing to make sure that the staff are fully trained, which will be an ongoing thing. We hope to start the end of this month or the beginning of February. There are five lessons. The first is an intro lesson. So no matter what grade you're in, there is the intro lesson. And then there's the four others specific. I will talk specifically about second grade. K through two pretty much have the same topics. Once you get to the upper grades, they do add more about bystander responsibility, bystander power, cyberbullying. The nice aspect of not only the kit, but there's a DVD and there's also the online resources. There are parent letters that can be printed in English and Spanish. And in addition, you can also email. And the really nice thing about what they call the home link is to make sure that not only do the parents know what we're teaching, but for the students and the adults in their lives to communicate around that.
Who lost you again?
I lost you.
Lost you.
Sometimes it says that I have good internet and then I don't. Okay, that's better?
Yep.
Let me just turn this one thing off. Were you able to hear about the home link, the parent connection, how the letters are? Okay, good. So our hope, like I said, is to be able to start the end of this month. You're probably thinking, well, who is going to be teaching these and when? The specifics of when and how often, we're still in the works of that. We've had a lot of nice teacher feedback after they were completing the online training saying, does this program like? Oh, did someone have a question?
No, you froze.
Oh. So we're still figuring out how many lessons, you know, are we going to do one a week or one every other, or just do, you know, the one? And then there's also ways to supplement it. They also give supplemental activities for what to do in social studies and what to do in art. So the logistics are still being worked out, but the teachers will be teaching it with support from the special subjects. Because unfortunately, in, you know, recess and lunch, we tend to see more incidences, sometimes transitioning to specials, sometimes in specials, sometimes in the classroom, but not always. So we wanted to make sure that we were really comprehensive with our lessons. To give you a brief sense of what is entailed in each lesson, each book has a scope and sequence. And the main one, which if next year when we start this, the introduction lesson is all about school climate, classroom climate, classroom rules, common language expectations. We've been working on that all year. The hope is that we continue to utilize the same language and expectations. And I know Melissa and the Student Council and many other people have been going over, you know, expected behaviors and what the rules are. And then the next lesson will have to do with the first R, which is the recognizing bullying, then reporting, then refusing, and then the bystander. So recognizing, reporting, refusing, and bystander are the four lessons. And within that, there's interactive activities, there's books, you can stream those right from Second Step. So it makes it a lot nicer that it's not just the teacher, you know, talking to the kids, it can be interactive. The books are, you know, it's a newer curriculum, so it's not like the old, old outdated Second Step SCLE program that you had to hold up those big cards. Any questions about that at this point? I know I'm trying to cover as many aspects as possible.
I was just, I was, what is the name of the curriculum?
It is from the Committee for Children and it's called Second Step Bullying Prevention Units. It's like the next step after their regular social emotional learning curriculum. If you've heard of Second Step before, this is the specific bullying prevention. Because like Melissa and I said, we're, we were noticing an increase in people reporting bullying and sometimes that word gets used very often. And sometimes unfortunately it is bullying, sometimes it's not. We wanted to make sure that the staff, the whole school community, the students were educated. And we're also looking for something that would have that family component, because it's really important for families to know, you know, what we're teaching and what we're doing. I know that we've already revamped our bullying incident report form. This curriculum gives samples for that as well. It also gives administrators trainings about policies and processes and procedures as well. So it's a pretty thorough, research-based. And from the schools that have been using it, there's definitely been some good success. The nice thing is we can always supplement with any other books that pertain to the topic of concern, responsive classroom activities. So there's a wealth of knowledge for staff and families as well.
I think there might be several questions. So are there? Kathy?
Yep. I had a question about, you said all staff is going to be trained and by all staff, does that include custodians, cafeteria workers, admin assistants? And what about bus drivers?
The bus drivers, we have not included in our thoughts, but that is an excellent point because you're right, that's still an extension of school and there's many reports there. Right now, yeah, so it would be the ESPs that would be doing all staff training, the custodians, cafeteria staff. My hope is to be able to include, if we have certain substitutes that we utilize frequently, have them access that as well. I do know that teachers give, you know, their daily notes and specifics, but for them to have the general knowledge and the high points of what we're teaching, that would be important. So that's good, so that when Melissa and I and other people meet, we can talk about the next step with the bus drivers and not all the teachers and Molly and Jean and Melissa, Molly, everybody, we've done the training, the ESPs, that's going to be starting sometime this week so that they'll have time to, or probably, I keep forgetting, it's almost the end of the week. That way they'll have time to do it next week and the week after, and then we'll be ready to start.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Just had one more. I didn't know, are there, have there been any? And what are the, are there any bullying investigations that have been done year-to-date at either schools?
Yes.
And is that, is it high? Is it, has there even been two? In, at HES?
Actually, one. No, one.
One at HES.
One at HES.
Right.
Yes.
I'll double check as I say, but I'm not aware of one this year.
Not aware of one this year either, but I mean, not many.
Yeah, let's go through me.
Anyone else? Melissa, I think my question is really more for you. How are we going to measure our progress on this?
That's a good question. Well, hopefully the number of our incidents will be reduced as far as the number of reports that we're getting.
Be they quite accurate or not.
Right. And I think also in the vocal data, I mean, part of what, the vocal data from MCAS, though that's only grades four and five, and right now we have CELUS data for grades three through six, as we start to look at more about those, am I feeling safe at school? Do I look forward to coming to school? Those are kids that we're going to want to be able to look at more closely as far as their data goes, because that report, Connor and I are waiting for what's called a SWAN report from the state, which basically is going to put the students' results into like a quadrant, four quadrants, based on the CASL information. So we can more quickly identify students who are struggling and might need more support and/or intervention. So hopefully as we start to experience more understanding and teaching around this topic, we should notice that those scores of students feeling safe or kids feeling like teachers are doing something, I have a safe, you know, an adult I feel trusted I can go talk to, those kinds of, that kind of data is increasing, or we see changes in that and positive.
Can you, can either one of you speak a little bit more about the piece that goes home in terms of, is it purely informational or is it also helping families learn what's in the lesson? Is it, here's the difference between bullying and a disagreement? Is it educational or just, oh, by the way, we're going to be studying this? Like, can you?
Sure. So at this point, the home link, like I said, it encourages the interaction, but it also lets them know what is learning, so, or what's being taught. So it will talk about the highlights of the lesson, give definitions of the recognize, report, refuse, the bystander. And then there are interactive activities that can be done to expand the learning so that it's not just the grownups talking to them. For example, it shows, you know, here's an example, one of your parents is talking, and then it says, "A safe and respectful thing that I can do or say." So it gives you interactive activities. There's different scenarios that can be kind of role-played with the family and the student. It will say, it'll give the scenario, it will talk about bullying clues. And then, you know, for the first clue, is someone being mean on purpose? Yes or no? So it kind of walks them through each of the scenarios. And then there's also a practice together when there isn't, you know, an incident that they want to report. And that's where it can be fine-tuned with, you know, was it really bullying? Was it a conflict? And you can write, you know, what happened? Who else was there? When did this happen? Where did it happen? Has it happened before? And I believe there's a line that says, like, who, who did you report it to? Because that's one of the things too, is we have some kids that report everything. Sometimes it's just a conflict, so there's a lot of training on that. And then there's situations that we hear after a while that should have been reported first off. And we want to make sure that all the kids understand what the expectations are around reporting and that it's not tattling, because that's what I hear a lot. I don't want to say anything because I don't want to be considered a tattletale or a narc. But we want to make sure if it's bullying, that they go to a trusted adult, and we use that language a lot, and so that they can report it. There's also some assessments online through the Second Step online portal that talks about, I think there's a student assessment form and then there's a teacher assessment form.
Great. Thanks for filling that in. I think we lost a little bit of that when you were explaining earlier, so that's great to understand.
Yeah, where I live, the Wi-Fi is farm country, the Wi-Fi is not great, LTE doesn't work great, so I apologize.
No, it worked out. Thanks for answering and thanks for joining us tonight. Are there any?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Nicole.
Thanks for having me.
You too.
You too.
Take care.
Okay. Hadley.
Hadley. I kind of mentioned a little bit, we kind of looked at preliminary CELUS data, which was not surprising. This again is based on the CASL, Social Emotional Learning Indicator system, or the CELUS is what the system was, but based on the CASL components. We are showing that most of our third through sixth graders are showing mostly developed or highly developed, or, I'm sorry, hang on, slight, so, I gotta go back and read my own ass. Our data is showing slightly above, half of our students in grade three through six are developing. So it's a little more encouraging than I thought. I kind of expected some of the data, having COVID and hearing a lot of, you know, we still are struggling with students who are feeling, or being, exhibiting some younger-than-normal tendencies as far as relationships with their fellow classmates. This was still encouraging. But again, I'm more interested in looking at this SWAN data because then we can really kind of fine-tune and look more globally at individual students, which will help us when we're thinking about other ways to support students, whether that through our 504s, our BST meetings, and any other curriculums that we feel like might be more needed to target some of that.
Did the CELUS data that you already received have any benchmark information with that, or is that part of what you guys are still waiting on?
Yeah, we're still waiting on that. It's because this is so new to us and this is the second cohort that's involved with this grant, or this, this specific type of data. Yeah, they're still working on that. And many Wednesday afternoons of logging in and hearing about how to disaggregate this data is now coming in. We redo this in the spring, so it'll be interesting to see if any of this changes after we're doing some of this bullying reporting, or this, the bullying curriculum, to see if some of that data does shift.
I think when that comes back, I'll be really curious to understand the progress that we've made, obviously, but if you can help give some context based on, what do we look like compared to the rest of the state? Like, just, because sometimes like, oh, we got a four.
Right.
So that'll be, I'm really interested to kind of understand that. And I'm thrilled that we're doing it.
Sure.
Other questions? Anything else in there?
Nope.
Do you want to, do you want to go or do you actually, maybe Dr. Brimner?
Yeah, Dr. Brim.
So we haven't had a chance to see you.
In person, yeah.
In person, but I, I know I don't have to speak for all of us, but I will say, we're very proud.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, I was very sick in December, so thank you very much. So I was thinking about, you know, I always am thinking mission-oriented wise, so I plugged them into my moments here, but, and I kind of split things by school this time around, but what a wonderful and accessible winter concert we had at HES. It was just great. And, and it was adapted for all sorts of kids with all sorts of abilities and it was just, really, I thought it was just wonderfully accessible and just a great showing. And we've welcomed several new preschoolers into our inclusive programs, so again, growing our community and also expanding our early childhood programs. To that end, our professional development has been ongoing with the preschool team. We have set our action items for the next year and a half, and that will include an expansion of this, these tiered models that really support universal design up through kindergarten and looking more into vertical alignment over the next year or so. And we've met with our coach and she's done two facilitated trainings with our leadership and then also the team, which has included our preschool ESPs. And next week, Melissa and I are attending the T-PoP training, which is the observation tool used with the pyramid model. And we hope to bring that back to leadership to talk about, you know, as we focus on tiered intervention across all the grades, that, how we reflect that in our teacher observations. And then I met with all the teachers and ESPs at HES to talk about the two parts of the IEP that we needed to dive into a little bit more, PLETS A and B, and these are where we look for accommodations and modifications. And we talked about the interplay of civil rights with the accommodations that we provide. And so it's just been some wonderful discussions around that, but I really appreciate Ms. Petra giving me more time than I was allotted at, at her faculty meeting. So really appreciate that. We have, in one purchasing world note, we updated one of our speech evaluations for our preschool kids. There's a newer version out. And so our new SLP asked for the newer version, so we were able to allocate that, which was helpful. We have moved forward in the hiring process with a certified special education teacher to fill the long-term leaves for the remainder of the year. Hasn't started, not completely finalized, but we've, we're in the process, so we'll keep hoping the process continues. Smith Academy, we have added some interest and discussion around the dual enrollment program to Landmark. We have our first student in and then other students identified for applying for the fall semester. And I just, I really had several families all at once in the last month who have joined us, either new families who have purchased homes in town or school choice in this year, just how positive the culture and small class size at Smith has made a change for their child, served on an IEP. Served on an IEP that just how Smith operates was just in a lot of ways such a difference that we're, you know, maybe able to step back some services and just support independence. So there's just several all at once. I just wanted to note that for Smith's mission moment. District wise, I worked with Ben, our IT director, through Suzer and all that over the break. Because we have some iPads that students use for assistive, augmentative and assistive communication or assistive technology uses for, you know, accessing, read aloud stories or text to speech, speech attacks or different things. And they weren't sort of owned by the tech department. They were sort of bought separately and in a disjointed way. So we've established a plan with Riley so we know how we're ordering them. They'll be owned through the tech department and he'll manage them and be able to push different apps to them. So it was kind of an issue that had been bugging me for over a year. And so Ben and I, we worked it all out, which was really helpful. And the CPAC will be meeting next, next week, January 23rd at 6 o'clock. I believe the link for it will be on their Facebook page. And I should have by that time, the night, the announcement for when our annual parent rights meeting is. I think it'll be in March, but I don't have the exact date yet. But it'll be announced hopefully at that meeting on January 23rd.
So things that we've been working on, some things have already been talked about. We are still monitoring. We applied for a high quality curriculum grant through the state. We got some feedback. There's some questions. We've answered them. So we're still waiting here. You know, I'm hoping that we're still in the game for that. I reached out today, as a matter of fact, just to see. I have not heard back. So that would be a game changer for us because we do have curriculum work that we need to do. And this would help us do that planning that we need to do, studying what we currently have, doing the long range planning that we need to do. I did update our curriculum page on our website so that parents knew that we were following the standards and the curriculum frameworks as they currently exist. So that's been updating. We'll be updating it even further with some preschool links and information. That'll be forthcoming as well. At, so in preparation for the budget, we've obviously been having some meetings administratively. We're taking a look. I know Dr. Driscoll is working hard at the Program of Studies and really working hard to figure out what courses and electives we need to and could add with both existing staff and if we had the opportunity, additional staff. We're also taking a look at a foreign language program, what that could look like. We're very initial stages of that. Looking at the different types of programs that are available for the elementary school so that it can feed our high school and middle school well. And so I'm very hopeful that we are able to be successful in getting that off the ground for the coming year. I think that I've shared with you, but I haven't necessarily shared it publicly. We do think the roof is fixed, at least one leak that was troubling us forever. And so we're hopeful that doesn't spark any new ones because sometimes when you fix one, they just travel to wherever they can find access. But this was a pretty major one underneath one of the HVAC units. And we've been going through and doing some minor repairs at HES, some lights and things like that that have been faulty. We still have some HVAC issues. We did get major heat into our music room and into our community wing that it seemed to be blocked pretty extensively, actually, from the description of the pipes that were taken out. So that's been fixed. But so we'll be taking a look at that. That's partly what that study we did last spring kind of pointed out. Even though it's a 20-year-old building, there's some significant HVAC issues that we need to go through. In terms of building overall, we're, this is the project that just won't finish. So we finally got switches in, which is what the phones plug into in the wall. So that's all been done literally on Friday afternoon. Ben and our IT assistant Caleb were in the closets putting those up and ready to go. So now we're waiting for CompuComputing, the phone company, to come and just literally put the phones on the desks and everything's done. We just need the phones. So that piece will be done. We had some key work that's kind of ongoing. We were probably about 90% done keyed at the high school. I believe everything is repaired now at HES. I haven't had an update from Serviu. And so we have a much cleaner, leaner system for that. And then we're also going to collect everybody's keys and record what they have so that we have a record of it because that's a piece that's kind of gone awry. So we'll be doing that in the next few weeks as well. We hope to, as soon as the phone piece is done, we have on order a video camera upgrade, one for HES and one for the high school that will go in the front entrance, at least at Smith. I think it will go, I think they're going to rearrange the existing cameras. But one that will be in the front will be a better, a better camera and have a better feed. I think I told you that we've also upgraded the HES phones through this process. They're going to be VoIP phones as well, but everything's existing. It's, this is all backend changes that can be done. The, the, the infrastructure was put in a number of years ago and for whatever reason, they just never switched over to VoIP. So Ben realized this and this will allow us to have a much cheaper phone bill every month at the, at HES and SA as well. So we're looking forward to that as well. We've been talking with the recreation department. I think they were having a meeting earlier before we got into the room. We're looking at helping them with the conversation about the pickleball courts and possibly tennis courts. We're open to the conversation to have them at the high school, middle school at Smith Academy and being them, you know, bringing them into being part of both our curriculum and obviously community curriculum as well. I think it'd be a nice complement to the walking path. And there's also some talk about upgrading the pond there as well through the CPA funds. And so it'd be quite a, I think, a beautiful area in the summertime or late spring for fishing and pickmicking and tennis when it all gets done. So that'll certainly be a, be a great piece here. One thing I can say about all of our educators is, and through the leadership of Molly and Connor and Melissa, is we're always pushing our teachers to be learners. And I'm really, really impressed with the work that Melissa's doing with the literacy piece, Molly's doing with the, with the special ed, sort of reteaching what the IEP is all about and how it's beneficial to the student and to the faculty member. And then Connor's working at the middle school, especially with how to really engage kids to take ownership of learning and student-led conferences. The middle school team is really the impetus for this. Connor is just the kind of facilitator that, you know, allows good teachers to do what they are interested in value. And so, you know, I think that that's a real plus for the kind of leadership that we have in our schools so that the teachers can be demonstrating model for their kids what kind of learners they are. So builds a great professional culture.
Fantastic. Questions on, before we move into the next sections of reports? There's a lot of reports tonight.
I just have two quick ones. Mr. Wood, can you quantify the savings for switching over to VOIP yet or not really?
I can't yet. We haven't done it and so I haven't seen the exact bill. But I believe we will be saving, the estimate that they gave us is that we should be saving at least $100 a month at the elementary school. The high school, it's a little more confusing because of how they were billing us previously through both, through the services that we were getting. So as soon as we get sort of a clean month, we'll be able to compare what we paid one month to the next. But it's going to be probably in a similar range, maybe even a little more at SA.
All right. And slightly off topic, but do we have an update on, like an updated timeline on the new website? That's supposed to be rolling out this year.
Well, now that the phones are out, we're meeting with some, some of the internet providers. I'm trying to get input from teachers and then I'll reach out to parents to also get their insights into what they're doing. I'm hoping that before the, maybe right after the, maybe mid-March, we'll have a provider. And then we'll have, we'll be able to go by whatever they can do in terms of transitioning. And it'll probably be a work in process. So everything, so everything might not be there by July 1st, but we'll be using it. It'll be the face of Hatfield Public Schools. So that's where, you know, so what we'll do first is have our interactive pieces for parents and families to be off that site so that they can get the pieces. We just scheduled an additional training for our administrative staff today, as a matter of fact, for them to update the forms so that they can be the interactive forms for all of parents on any platform that they choose.
Other questions? Because I just want to clarify, when we're, some of the purchases that we've had lately, we've talked about the savings from the phone. I guess my understanding was a lot of that's really been driven by additional safety. Is that so?
Right. So the purchases for the hardware, that has been through the annual town meeting grant that was, was realized was available. So we've been spending against that for the hardware, for the phones, the video cameras, the key upgrades and so forth. So that's been done. The phone savings for the monthly charges, that'll be on our budget. So one of the other things we've done is cleaned up our internet charges. We had been previously co-mingled with the town for Smith Academy, but not HES. So we've, we've unbundled those and we've now bundled HES and SA together and cleaned those up. And there's going to be a small savings in those on a monthly basis as well.
And how's our internet service looking?
So that's part of the unbundling that we did. So we, don't hold me to this, but I think we doubled our service that we had. If I'm looking at John. I think, I don't know what it's, if it's MPs or MBs. It's 254 up and 254 down now, or will be. So I believe we doubled it. And still will have some savings, but we haven't gone to fiber.
Okay. Steps in the right direction. Nice to be off the bottom of the list.
I was just gonna say, we're probably going to be somewhere at the top of the third of the bottom. How's that?
Not at the bottom. Awesome. Because if we have more computer science courses, it would probably be good if we were not. The slowest bandwidth in the state. Okay. So next piece of your report, I think you have more to share.
Yes. So personnel, we talked a little bit about. In terms of, we have a candidate for the long-term sub. Kathy Lawton, who's a current employee, has been doing an admirable job. But Molly has had to support that as well. And so we have a candidate who's licensed, who's able to do all the testing. So we'll be doing, we'll be onboarding that person as well, Patricia Murphy. And then we have a leave of absence, not, I'd call it a short-term leave of absence for an ESP and we'll, we'll backfill that with daily subs primarily. And the sub we hired for Kathy Lawton will be part of that backfill as well so that we'll be able to keep her for a little while longer. We're still looking for a van driver. Anybody?
Did you want to go on and talk about the communication plan?
Sure.
Can't pull that up. There's no access. So if you requested access, it was granted. So that's a one opportunity.
You should all have it now.
Am I gonna have to? You shouldn't have. Leave the agenda and come back yet?
No, you shouldn't have to. Shouldn't just hit refresh. So this is a work in progress and many thanks to Christie, who's been kind of coaching me along on this. Just trying to figure out every piece of it in terms of what do, what do families want to know about? Because that's a big part of this is, you know, what, what do our, what do the audiences that we service want to know? It's, it's one thing to say what we think they want to know or ought to know, but it's another piece of that. So this, this is a living document, but it's certainly something we can post on our website and make sure it's available to families. And I don't know if you formally are looking to adopt this or if you're just trying to get an idea of.
Check in.
Yeah. So, you know, as, as other changes and alternatives, you know, go on, on here, I think, you know, as we, as we go through the year and especially as we're talking about the new website, I think we'll be adding pieces of this as well to this.
I certainly would imagine there's a component that comes out of this that would live on the side. I don't know that this, as people take a look at it, since they haven't looked at it, I don't know that this would live on the website.
Right. We may just take like a couple of the columns.
Pieces of it, yeah. And then you're working on sort of the strategic piece that, that comes in front of this.
Right. So there's a, yes. So there's a piece that sort of does the crosswalk between our strategic plan and, and this. This is sort of the technical piece of it.
Do you mind if I say, Adeline? So I think one of my hopes is we've worked on having a communications plan for the district that goes, that helps sort of set expectations, not just for the superintendent's office, but the principals and per chance the teachers as well. As we're looking at who talks to whom and how do they reach them, is to kind of give us a working list that we grow and develop because so much of communications is being proactive and trying to get ahead of the need, which I think as we talk about being sort of consumer centric is how we will service our families really well so that we're having that list grow over time and sort of like a checklist. Desi does one for superintendents. It's really, I don't know if all superintendents use it, but it's a backfill to sort of like, did we make sure that we got all this stuff done? Just kind of helps keep everybody on track, not that they need to learn how to do it off the checklist, but.
It's a good road.
I'm a big fan of checklists and making sure that we're, we're looking ahead. So that's what this is designed to do. So there's sort of a piece that I think we'll see come from Michael in a meeting or so just that sort of looks at the strategic side of, to his point, where the, how it touches up with the district improvement plan. But I think the goal for this other piece is to be a document that grows over time so that next year and the year after and the year after that, it's timed so that you kind of have a list of, here's what I'm going to go find. I'm going to make sure that we're getting this information out about back to school to parents. There's some of it that happens at the end of the year. There's some of it that happens in July or August. Just setting everyone's expectations. So anyway, as you have things that come to mind, I'm sure you can send them in. It's a good start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because I think you're building a tool for the district that's really long-term. I don't think it's about just right now. Because that's what I could have said much shorter. Are there questions about that? In. Are there questions about that in general or specifically?
I don't know if this is the, the place for this, but looking at that first page of when there is a shelter in place. Actually, I think it should say also, or lockdown. I was thinking about that a lot yesterday and I feel like it would be really beneficial to expand on educating parents, community, students about both of those scenarios, shelter in place or lockdowns, about specifically what it looks like. Shelter in place, you know, you're, you're in your classroom, but is the lesson still going? Lockdown, what does that look like? And kind of specifically about communications and cellphones with students and staff having cellphones. How the purpose of a shelter in place is to protect the privacy of an individual who may be having a personal or medical crisis, or what are the other criteria that calls for a shelter in place to be issued? I think without enough education, students and parents panic and assume the worst. Assume that 0.1% of what it could be, rather than all the other likely things for why we do these things. If we can push these educational components at open house, first day of school with students, reminders either in the newsletters, on the website, every time we have a drill, you know, it goes home again to the parents, we conducted a lockdown drill. And as a reminder, these are the things that, you know, we're preparing for. Just to keep pushing to it. I also think combining this educational piece with our safety personnel in town, the police and fire. Because that was one of my phone calls yesterday that I received of how here's a scenario that a student texts or calls a parent. Oh, my gosh, there's a situation. I don't know what it is. I'm scared. Parent is now scared. Parent comes to the school. I'm gonna see if I can see what's going on. Now we have bystanders that are going to interfere with police, fire, EMS, anybody who needs to be there. They could also be affecting the privacy issues of anyone that is needing services. So these are things that I feel like we need to convey and educate parents and students and potentially staff of why we do these things.
No, I think, I think those are all great, great points. This is, as a point of fact, our, our incident we had yesterday, we had no parents come to the school. So whatever students were communicating, and I'm sure they were. But I like that.
They were.
I'm sure, I'm sure. But I like the idea of really educating them because there's also there's an issue with them communicating out too, because of the ability to hack.
They're speculating. They're guessing what it could be, or it's that, or it might be this person because they saw somebody walk down the hall. You know.
Yeah.
If, if our reasons are to protect privacy, to stop rumors, to ease the fears, all these wonderful things that are listed here, we have to figure out how to do that. And I think really by having this push and combining with police and fire and help having them come in and give their reasons why it's not helpful for them to speculate and text or call home. So those were just my thoughts. And when it came up on here, I just thought it was an opportunity to share those thoughts with you all.
Great. Thank you.
And there's a broader learning opportunity and all of that. What is our role in our society? Are we texting everyone and citing fear?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll look forward to updates on
Sure.
on plans.
Want to look at the calendar?
Yeah. So we have a 23, 24 proposed calendar to check out. I did happen to print copies for the committee on that one, just because that is hard to look at on the screen sometimes. Do you want to speak to this?
Sure. So this is a very traditional calendar. I'm still getting input. The faculty all have it. The, I think the biggest thing that's been said so far, just through emails, through the principals, is the idea of, of having the parent-teacher conferences back in October because there was some history of that as opposed to the December piece. There's some desire to have the day, the last day of December that we're before the holiday break, the winter break, the 22nd to be, that to be the early release day or, or I should clarify. So right now, the 15th is an early release day for educational purposes. They would also like it to be an early release before a winter break.
That's from staff?
That's from staff. So, so I'm looking for more input from them to see what they're, what they're, but other than that, it's a pretty traditional calendar in that regard. I did double check because there was some conversation or miss on where it came from, but it was in multiple settings actually, about whether or not people were having, oh, I think you and I had it originally, but then my colleagues also were having it as well. The, the Easter is early this coming year. And so they were wondering.
I was in on that conversation.
You were on that conversation. So they, they were wondering, area districts were looking out to see when the vacation week was going to happen. I had already proposed, put it to paper that we would do the regular Patriots Day week. And everybody in the area is doing the same.
Okay. Because I think Easter Sunday must be that seventh.
I believe it is.
We've certainly had that holiday fall early in the month before. But typically our vacations are the third week. If you look at the February vacation, the April vacation. I'm not sure that it would make sense to follow that particular holiday, since that holiday is a floating holiday.
Right. It moves in this Orthodox Easter and so.
I think it's safer to keep it in a set week that people can count on.
In 2024, so that this Easter, Easter is March 31st. It's super early.
Super early.
Yeah.
So it would make sense to follow the holiday with a vacation then.
So just for anybody who's playing along, I did a little double check of the Massachusetts legal holidays, per Secretary Galvin. I, I know we mark Veterans Day on Friday. It falls on the Saturday, I believe. By the state's rule, we don't have to give that on, if it falls on a Saturday, you can recognize it on a Saturday. But it does parallel the number of days.
Right.
So just an informational thing, so we're, it should come up later. So I counted eight, eight half-days for HES, five half-days for Smith Academy and five PD days total. Which I believe contractually checks all the boxes.
Right.
But the, the five half-days at each, you said how many for HES?
Eight.
Some of those are just the curriculum half-days.
Curriculum half-days, correct.
There's only five of the curriculum half-days, correct?
Right. So there's eight total at HES. And then there's five that both have. So there's three additional ones.
That's new this year, isn't it?
They overlap.
Smith Academy is doing all five of the curriculum half-days. Initially, that was only an elementary thing. And then some benefit was seen to have a couple of them at the high school as well. But.
I thought it paralleled what we had this year when I went and looked back.
I believe it does. I didn't, I didn't make any over effort to change it.
Did we have it this year that they?
And I believe you had it last year too, because I didn't make any overt effort to change that. In fact, at one point, I'd make Dr. Driscoll back and connect, do his contact hours because I wanted to make sure that he made it, met his hours. So.
So in December, on the 15th, those are conferences just at Smith Academy? On the 15th of December? Or is it, is it October or December for parent-teacher conferences?
I don't think it's supposed to say conference there.
Oh, I see. The word conference, yeah. Yeah, it's just supposed to be.
The curriculum half-day, isn't it?
Yeah, yes. It's a curriculum half-day.
That's a PD day.
Yeah. Half-day, yeah, early release.
And so conferences will be in October, the 6th and the 20th.
And what's been the feedback on that from staff? They're ready to have conferences in October?
So I think it's mixed. I just put out a survey just to get a very definitive sort of count so that we can say it's, it's going this way or not. But I think that Melissa has that mandatory evidence that that's the way they would like to put it.
A majority of the staff feel that the December is way too late. I know that some of our earlier child, early childhood folks think that October is too early. However, when we are coming back into school, we begin our fall data assessments. And I, by, and they're done by the end of September. So come October, even though they might not have lots of experience with their students, we do have a lot of great data. So I think it's important to have those conversations early on with families about student strengths, areas of things that they can be doing to, you know, I think by December, that conversation is feeling like a little too late. A little like, oh, my gosh, if I had known this earlier, I would have liked to have known that. So I think more, more of the staff than not would prefer the, the fall com, I, I support the October conferences as well. So I think it makes more sense.
So you think that by the 6th, that first set of conferences, reading and math benchmarks will be, have been completed?
Yes. Yeah, for all grades.
Is there any consideration given to having one of the conference opportunities be evening hours for people that work? I mean, we have two half-days and parents have to come during the day.
I think, I don't know if that's a negotiation.
Yeah, it would probably have to be because of best practice of what's happened. I, I think it's definitely worthwhile to enter that conversation because I think it's legitimate to do that. So I'm happy to push that conversation forward.
In previous districts, that was actually part of the contract. You were required so many evening events that you needed to participate. Open house was one, conferences was another.
So that's, that's actually, the next question I had is how soon can we set dates for some of those things? So anything that a parent would have to take off time for work or be out early enough, can we identify those dates sooner than later? And could we get them on the calendar?
Like the open house, you mean?
Like an open house or
A winter concert.
A winter concert. Things that need a lot of planning, can we, can we start?
I wouldn't put them on this document because as you said, it's a very busy document, but I think we could do, we can do another.
Find a way to add it to the bottom of this.
We could do it like a backside kind of thing.
I definitely think by spring, we could definitely fine tune and have staff input on when those, those dates could be for sure. Absolutely.
I think the earlier we do them, the better attendance we get, just.
Yeah.
So there's no voting on this tonight because we're still getting input. Are we gonna see this come back?
Next meeting.
Okay. And we'll be ready to vote for that?
I would hope so.
Okay. Anybody have concerns? I know one of the things that's driving some interest is our start date. Is there anything that anyone wants to speak up about that would impact the 31st of August? Anybody hearing concerns about that? Or does that look?
That has not come up yet. That's one of the questions I've asked in my survey, but that hasn't come up. But I, that might be more of a parent concern that we're starting before, but I think historically you have. You did this year, you did last year.
It's the same timeframe as last year. I think it's a little earlier than some neighboring districts, but I don't see that as an issue. I just
Yeah.
I'm aware.
Would the pre-K and kindergarten, kindergarten I think is the same, but would the pre-K end date be the same as everyone else? I thought it was earlier than.
They usually end earlier.
But it's not.
About a week earlier, generally.
So if we could get that noted in here.
Yeah.
That should be on. Is there, I, I noticed that the seniors will be staying around a little bit longer than they did this year.
Not necessarily. They don't stay until graduation.
Okay.
They finish before graduation. They typically have like a week, a week and a half off.
Right.
Okay.
But between when they finish their finals and when we have graduation.
Right. They'll go to the 31st of May, usually with finals, and then they will do any makeups in that third, fourth and fifth. And if, and graduation practices. They do have to get 168 days in.
So my only comment, and I know this is a draft. And we, we've used the same calendar format for like years repeatedly. And I continue to struggle with some of the acronyms and the formatting. So like in the final version, I mean, I understand them. But in the final version that we're gonna present to the public, I would love it to be.
I was hoping he might let me sprinkle some pixie dust on it.
Just like, please, and the different, you know what I mean? Like it's a lot of acronyms.
It's not reader-friendly right now.
We could put on, there are, there are other formats I can use. This, this is just a spreadsheet, literally.
Totally. It's totally a draft, but just whenever we are ready to present it, you know, maybe minimizing some of them.
Yeah.
We'll work with our media consultant.
Perfect.
And I think when you go to put it online, it will, that will help you down the road. Because it's something that will post and print clean will be good. Okay.
Thank you.
True point. Okay. Making sure we didn't skip anything that everybody had a chance to read Dr. Driscoll's report. Mr. Wood, do you want to do a quick check-in on the district improvement plan?
Sure. Again, I feel like we just met, but in some respects, the, so I'm not sure. I can't jump down to that.
Were there any, let me, let's try this. Did folks have a chance to look at the check-in? Are there any questions related to that? Is there anything you feel like we're not making progress on at the pace we're supposed to?
I don't think so. I think we're really on pace with our assessment piece. I think maybe there's a piece around, Molly's doing a great job with, with pyramid and at the K to pre, pre-K area for MTSS. I probably have to look more closely at what, what are we doing more expressly at for MPSS, which is the intervention model piece for our, definitely grade seven through 12. I'll have to talk more with, with Connor about that. I know that part of what he's doing with the project-based learning and the collaborative learning, he's trying to get at through there. So he may need to talk a little more. That's how, how happening. But actually, I think SA does a pretty good job already with interventions. And to your earlier comments from parents and so forth, they see it, you know, it's just easier to do with the smaller class sizes.
The addition that Connor made, the, well, kind of two big things happened. We, we redefined what the skills class was, and then he's added that intervention block in the X block.
Right.
For everybody. So really, we're able to do a lot of really fun things right now to, to meet individual needs, so.
Regarding the winter-spring advertising campaign. I saw recently another district having an informational night or I'm trying to think if that's what they called it, where parents
Come in.
Come in and they kind of can tour the building and talk about, you know, what we offer. It's like a in-person selling thing.
Right. Sort of a open house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know if that's. Yeah. I didn't know if that's something that we want to look at trying.
We are.
Good.
Do you know roughly when?
I don't know. I mean, I know that he's got it on his schedule soon.
And there will be faculty there as well?
Yes, not the full faculty, but yeah.
But there will be people.
People.
People will be there. Okay. Moving on to item eight, recycling technology of voters requested. Mr. Wood?
Yeah, this, so Ben has been doing, really trying to get our inventory done, get really bad technology out of the building. So these two lists are, and recycle what we can. He's, he's done a lot of work because now there's essentially two people in, in our IT department. So they can work more collaboratively to get some of these other pieces done. So he has put together two lists. One is a list of absolutely obsolete or, or broken technology we have absolutely no use for. We don't think that it should be given away because it's, it's really junk, but we'll post it and if somebody wants it, they can have it. The retired technology, there are, there are some pieces that somebody may be able to get some benefit out, but we can't educationally. So we would put those on our website according to our new policy and we would promote those and, and until they're gone, we'll have a, we'll have a night or a series of afternoons where they can make appointments to come in and look or what have you and pick it up and take it. But it, it, we need to dispose of both sets.
You don't want the Commodore 64s?
We do not.
Okay.
No.
So this is.
Dot matrix.
Keeps in our new policy. Okay. Anyone want to put a vote?
Yeah, I, before that, I just wanted to say that five boxes of miscellaneous cables is very relatable. So I'm just, I was delighted to see it on the list and I'm glad we're taking care of it. So with that in mind, I would like to make a motion to recycle and dispose of the technology as outlined.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Great. So with full support, let's recycle and move it on. And so now we come to the fun part of the evening. I'm sure you all have tuned in for, it's the budget advisory subcommittee report. Mr. Sullivan?
Hi. So I'm going to keep mine short because Mr. Wood's going to have a much more in-depth presentation. But true to form, I want to start off with some good news. First, Mr. Wood mentioned that the roof fix at the elementary school is working, but just note that this is not a permanent solution. So the roof still needs to be replaced pretty much across the board. We talked with Mr. Wood about how the elementary school has tightened up its billing for pre-K, so it's easier for families to keep track and for the school to keep track of what they've paid and when and how much they owe. And Mr. Wood had brought up that they're changing student information services software, which should be both better and cheaper.
Yeah.
Okay. As far as our current fiscal year, we have some issues with three long-term absences that will affect our budget or could, they could cause budget issues through the end of the year. Generally speaking, year to year, there's not really a plan on how to handle long-term absences. You can't, we haven't budgeted for them and there's no line in our budget for a contingency. We discussed if that was something that would, we could consider down the line. But so whenever there's a long-term leave, it creates the issue of where does this money come from? And where do the administrators have to tighten up to try to cover the costs of the long-term subs? And with three and then potentially up to four by the end of the year, there will need to be some tightening up, basically. There was an issue, I don't remember if we brought this up last time, but we had received from our elevator service contractor that our elevators might need a service to get up to code, but it seems like all districts got this form letter and were unclear if our elevators need it. It was just like, for $10,000, we can fix this thing.
Yeah, that, that was why it got our attention and made it worth saying. $10,000 fix. That was the entry price, right?
Yeah. So they continue to look into that. Nothing needs to be done until maybe June and they're looking at just a new elevator service contractor possibly. Going forward, looking at next year and beyond budgets, things that we discussed at our budget subcommittee meetings, where's, you know, where do we want to put our focus for the money? Not just, you know, we, we all kind of unanimously agreed last time that we didn't want to just focus on a level services budget that we need to, in addition to that, focus on funding our district improvement plan, making sure both of our schools are competitive and alluring to our population and the populations beyond. In that, in that line of thought, we reviewed some of the feedback from Mr. Wood and the administration about what programs they could add or change to improve the curriculum here at our schools. One thing that came out was, as previously mentioned, starting perhaps a Spanish curriculum at Hatfield Elementary School, which is an idea I particularly like. And this would be from K through six. I know I had heard from parents before that this is something that they would love to see happen at the elementary school. Getting it started earlier would be better for everyone. And then enhancing computer science curriculum at Smith Academy and different coding options. We discussed perhaps game coding. Anything to enhance what we currently offer, which is already a pretty robust program. And then we just continue to just make sure that the offerings that if we're going to be adding things, that it just be broadened and reached that we're not, yes, we want to find the, the niches that make Smith Academy or Hatfield Elementary School unique. But also we want to make sure that we're appealing to everyone that, you know, if we don't want to just push the, the lever down on one thing and ignore the other student population. So there'll be enhanced arts offerings, things like chorus and theater are being discussed. Bringing back some middle school sports, Mr. Wood even mentioned that MAA now has an esports division. So I, I thought it'd be kind of amusing to have, you know, the Hatfield State champion of Super Smash Brothers hanging in the Smith Academy gym. Looking at maybe providing transportation or piloting a program of having transportation for school choice kids, finding what communities, if, if there's a community that in particular sends a lot of students to our schools, find a spot where we could get a bus to them and bring it here. And the last option that was discussed was adding a school psychologist at the Hatfield Elementary School, which would help offset costs that we already have. We have high contract, service, contract service costs there because we don't have a staff psychologist there. So we could supplement, we could supplement what we were already doing with our own in-house service, basically, and be able to provide even greater services to students who we might not be meeting their needs yet or students down the road who are not yet identified. And that is my report.
Very well done.
Okay. Questions from the committee?
I really like the, the consideration of providing transport for school of choice. Perhaps one way to consider that would be a, a central pickup or drop-off point rather than, let's focus on this town because we have a large number from this town. Instead, pick a more central drop-off location and pick up multiple communities that can go to that one location and get a bus full or however many we can. I do know some other districts that are doing something similar, so that would be very competitive for us to try that.
I really like the, the changes and additions that you outlined here. I'm just wondering if you have anything additional to add about sort of your decision process in these particularly, if it was feedback from the administration or other.
Well, I think largely these were things that we put out that followed the district improvement plan, but also it was like, if it, if it's not this, the cost of this is going to be equivalent to other things we might do. So I, I don't think this was about writing down in stone, like it's going to be Spanish.
Right.
I mean, I think we looked at all of those and we're like, that makes a lot of sense, but the cost for that is going to be equivalent to something comparable that we would look to add. So I think from a budget standpoint, it was taking some broad strokes and getting close and then coming back for feedback. But then we had some numbers because it, we have to put our budget in.
Totally. I always appreciate your thoughtfulness. Just wanted to look at.
Yeah, but I, I don't, I mean, I do think there's also conversations from administration and I'll let them speak for that. But from the budget subcommittee standpoint, it wasn't like we sat back and thought, let's just sign up for this.
I wouldn't assume so.
Yeah, I would say that, that, you know, that it's kind of a little bit in reverse in terms of how I'm used to doing some of this. Usually there would be sort of years of planning and then we would budget and then propose a budget and so forth. So we're kind of going a little bit in reverse in that there, there hasn't been that year of planning that, you know, would say, here, here we have a fully developed foreign language program or, you know, experiential ed program and here's a budget for it and we're ready to go. But I think that, you know, we've had some initial conversations. It's, it's been out there in terms of what people have talked about. So again, it's, we, we would, if we were going to do anything, we would need to have it in the budget to do it. It's not something where we would say, oh, we just found $80,000, we'll, we'll do this.
Yeah. And I definitely do recognize community feedback that we've received in the past, or some of these are programs that are sorely missed currently. So it makes sense.
At one point I had talked to Connor, like, you know, if there was one thing he could add or bring back that he feels would make the most impact, what would it be? It was just like middle school sports. We miss it.
The other piece that's going on right now is that particularly for Smith Academy stuff is they're collecting data from all the neighboring areas. Because as we know, we, we've got to be competitive to keep our school choice, to keep our own kids and to pull more kids in. And so part of the assessment right now, as Dr., Mr. Wood's talked about the curriculum assessment that's going on, is looking at like, okay, here's where we, we fill in all this stuff. And I got to tell you, for the number of students and teachers we have, the amount we offer is sort of shockingly good. I, I really, I would hate to have to schedule that. I don't know how, like what miracles they work when the counselor sits down to figure that out. Because there's a lot offered. And academic electives, I was, I've spent some time on reading through this lately and I was like, wow, like stuff I didn't take till college. I was like, we could do that? That's fantastic. But then it's sort of like overlaying that with what's going on down the road. And there are a few pockets where like, hmm, it's really great if you want to be in band, but if you're, if you have a performing artist in your home, there's not a lot there right now. So part of this is, is looking at what's going on where we really just don't line up. And where can we, for the bang for the buck, where can we add a little bit that is synergistic with what we have and what's missing that we, you know, we can sort of fill in some of those gaps. So the language piece at an elementary level is part of that too, like a lot of community interest, a lot of educational benefits, that perfectly makes sense. But it's also something that other schools are figuring out how to put that in their day. So. We, we, we may be paving the road and having our foot on the gas at the same time, but I think we can do it.
I'm just mindful of the time. I'm, I am fine with if you want to table the A and B under that and, and get down to school choice and then into the budget. If you want to do something like that, that would be.
For sure. But I think we do need to take a look at the school choice proposal because applications are going to come open. So moving on.
Okay.
So we'll table, we'll come back and talk about teacher substitute pay and an enrollment, the enrollment update kind of, you're going to see it as part of the school choice proposal anyway.
So we've seen this form slightly in its earlier form in past. So what I tried to do is, you know, look at an average class size based on, on, you know, estimated numbers. Can everybody open it? Let's see lots of faces on there, so that's good. So, you know, we've got existing small class sizes, accounting for four move-ins in every class, in every grade, I should say, to be clear. You know, these numbers in the far right are kind of the large numbers of, of what we could bring in for school choice. I think that our goal is to at least add 20 in each school next year as, as kind of a push goal, you know, in, in trying to make that happen. So if we want, you know, if we want to, you know, open seats of no more than 10 per class, you know, except for those that are less than 10, which I think there's only one, then I think we could, you know, you would get to your 20 in each, in each school, which is what we're targeting. And then, of course, preschool is not school choice. And I didn't put a specific number in for kindergarten because it's hard to tell what will be on our census in addition to what we already have in our preschool. But I could almost guarantee that it won't, you know, I, I don't think, and I talked to Lydia the other day. I think the census will be complete. I know you have one from last year, but the new one will be complete within the next couple of weeks. So, you know, I think that if we opened 10 seats up, I don't think we would be overstacking the seats. So I guess my recommendation is 10 per grade, even though we could do more.
I just have a quick question. Do we need to vote tonight on the number of seats per grade or just what grades will be open for school choice?
So, great question. I think you, you could just vote that we're opening, we have openings in every grade and do the next meeting. So you could study it a little bit more and do the specific numbers. Yeah.
That certainly would fulfill what you need now.
Exactly.
Do you guys want some more time to, to review this? Are you comfortable making a vote that we could open space up in every grade? So right now you can see the number we have, so the headcount we have of existing Hatfield and school choice kids by grade. I believe the largest group we have is 34.
Right.
And last year's seniors were 40. So. I would be very open to a motion to allow for school choice applicants at every grade level.
So I'll make a motion. Don't we have to include that we are participating in school choice?
Sure.
So I'll make a motion to participate in school choice and to have openings at every grade level.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, so we will bring back a specific vote by grade. If you have questions on the form, I made a version of this available so you can run your own numbers.
Two seconds.
So is that last column the recommended column? That's like the?
That's the maximum number of kids we could have.
To take.
To take in. That's, that's the number of school choice max. Okay.
So that, well, that's max minus four.
Minus four, right. That's why it's max, yeah.
Is there a particular reason why we're forecasting pre-K to be just 11?
So again, we don't take school choice in pre-K, but those are, we have currently three-year-olds that would stay as we hope, as four-year-olds. So those, those are those 11. So I, I just don't have the census yet.
Okay, so we don't like make a estimate as to how many three-year-olds we might get in next year.
Right. I, I would, I would guess that it would probably be similar to this year. We did exceptionally well this year. We, we maximized our numbers. We want 15 in each class. So we were, you know, very good. We're right there now.
I, I do want to clarify, we don't do school choice in pre-K because it's not part of the school choice program. But remember our policy, we do accept tuition in from other districts, other towns. So just to clarify that, that's not reflected.
For everyone, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's not, that's why it's not, when you asked about like school choice, it's. Yeah, but it's not, that's why it's not, when you asked about like school choice, it's not part of the official program because of how it is.
Gotcha, yep.
Okay.
I just had one question about this, which will be more for next time. But there was a time a couple of years ago where the school advisory team had met and they had, and Connor was on that committee and he had input from teachers about like their ideal class sizes. And there was, there were some differences with the younger kids of keeping us well. I'm just wondering if that was taken into account with these numbers or if that had been updated?
It hasn't. I mean, I'm going based on experiences that I've had. So we have 15 for preschool, 18 for K1 and 2 as the maximum class size, 22 for 3, 4, and 5, and 6, and then 24 for the 7 through 12. But I'll go back to those numbers if there's written.
I can promise you they were lower than that.
And if they are, that's fine. I mean, I'm open to that. I just.
We can bring it back and have that conversation. But they were notably different.
I'm sure. I mean, again, our target is 20, so they could be lower for the school and still hit. So I'm not worried about that.
So we're really talking about two or three kids per grade.
Right.
And right now that wouldn't bump anybody up particularly high.
Right. So it was like grade five.
Yeah.
There's six in there. There's one, six, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you Jen for remembering that. Do we need to have a discussion on capital planning tonight? We've put it on the agenda in case there were updates or changes, but we've looked at that. I think there's only been one meeting.
Yeah, we'll be meeting again next week.
Okay. Is there anything you need to share with the committee at this point?
Not in particular. I mean, it looks like free cash might be lower than we had expected. But I think we should, I don't know if we have a final number on that quite yet, so I think we should wait and see how the.
We actually asked before the meeting. It's not certified yet.
Okay, so yeah, since there's nothing official, there's really nothing to, nothing to say yet.
Okay, so with that, we will, much anticipated fiscal '24 budget draft one.
So like, you know, as it happens to be, a lot of what we've talked about tonight has been the precursor to what I'm going to talk about in my budget presentation. Because, you know, it's, it's a critical. I don't know what's going on with this, started in the middle. You know, as Adam pointed out, you know, we've done a lot of conversations around this. We wanted to build a budget that really looked at what our vision was for our public schools and to really target our goals and to not just begin, but really move towards activities that would, strategies and tactics that would get us to that place that we need to be. And so, you know, I think one of the things that we focused on was keeping our programs thriving. We have, we have great programs. We have people, great people. We wanted, we did a fabulous job in our negotiations to have our salaries competitive. And we're really, as I mentioned earlier, stretching our teachers already with new curriculum and new software that really puts the research-based materials in front of our kids. And that's what we, we need and what we want and what makes, what will continue to make our kids successful when they graduate from Smith Academy. And so we want to remain thriving so that we're competitive with the area schools around us. So that when you move to Hatfield, you know you're coming here with an educational foundation that you want your kids to be part of this school system. And so not only do you need the programs, the staff, but you need good, healthy buildings. So as I talk about our budget, you'll hear references to some increases in maintenance staff, maintenance activities so that we can keep our buildings healthy and vibrant as well. So we're looking at investments and in terms of the overall budget that I'm proposing, it's less than 4% of the overall cost. But we, we are targeting specifics. We've kind of talked about them already. And I, you know, to some earlier comments, these may evolve as we get together more with teachers and parents and staff, administration, and really flesh out what these programs will look like as we start the year. But we, we wanted to make sure we had the resources so that it wasn't a start-stop kind of situation. And we want to advertise it, right? We want parents who are considering opportunities to go elsewhere to come here. So we want to be able to advertise that we're offering a foreign language program for K through 6. And most likely Spanish, only because our high school teaches Spanish. And we want it to be a good continuity of programming into our high school. So along with that, we have some investments that would allow for programming offerings at SA. Again, we're looking at a couple of different things, maybe chorus, maybe theater, coding, expanding our coding program. And definitely expanding our opportunities for SEL learning, trainings for teachers, for students. So that school psychologists would be an added resource so that we would have in-house assistance for our evaluation teams to have someone to talk to and really unpack IEP meetings and evaluations that are ongoing. But also to be visiting with kids and seeing kids and consulting with parents and consulting with Molly along the way in terms of, you know, what's going on? And how can we, and I think again, in terms of investments, Molly's developing great programming and we're getting tuition students in, it would be a great selling point to say we have our own school psychologists that we can rely on to help us, you know, when your child comes to our school. So I think that's a, that's a key piece of this. And there's money in here so that we can, you know, we can market our schools. That, that doesn't just happen by accident. And, you know, not only materials, but radio time, you know, cable time, I'm going to look into that, John. And, you know, finding ways to get our name out there and make sure that we really make the communities around us aware that we have school choice opportunities. Because we want our kids, we want kids to be coming here because of what we offer. But more importantly, what we offer is of high quality. And that's going to take these kinds of investments to make it happen. We are bringing in tuition students. Molly's doing a fabulous job along with work with the principals and the staff to bring in tuition students at Smith Academy. We have space available in our Stars Program at the elementary school. And people know we're out there. And so, you know, and I think springtime probably gets a little bit, the window starts to open a little wider in springtime because schools work very hard to get to a place. But if they don't get to that place, they start looking for programs elsewhere. And I think we're a very cost-effective option for, for them in terms of our step-down program at services, I should say, at SA and our program at, at the elementary school. We have room for school choice. You just saw the numbers. We have available space for our school's choice students. So we do need to really make ourselves known about what we offer and why kids should come here and why families should come here. We want to be inclusive to all families as well. We want them to have a sense of belonging. And so we need to work at that as well. And there are other things that I think we need to work on to make that happen as well. Our out-of-district expenses, we're actually very, very well positioned right now with our out-of-district expenses. And again, Molly's working to help families see the value of whether they want to stay with the program they are in or whether they want to come back. Because now we have some options and we have some services that we can really help, help them that we maybe we didn't have four, five, six years ago when they went out of district. But now we do. And, and we're improving on those. And so I really think that we have the opportunity to continue to work to bring back younger students. Obviously, older high school students want to graduate and finish up their program and they deserve to do so. But certainly students that maybe went out three, four years ago, five years ago, Smith Academy might be a place for them to come back to because we have the kinds of services and supports that they can do. I think these investments will also encourage our residents to stay. Depending on what they're looking for in terms of out of other schools, private schools, other public schools, if we're competing with them and offering the same things, we're the competitive option. We, they should want to stay and support their community. And then, you know, obviously, the investments that we're trying to make will require some professional development and some trainings, which there are some monies in here for those as well. And, but that again encourages our staff to want to stay here with us. Because oftentimes you hear that part of why teachers want to leave, yes, there's a salary piece, but it's also that professional culture. I'm not learning anymore. I don't have the opportunities to find out new ways of teaching. And we're offering that and we can continue to offer that. Just to kind of toot our own horn in terms of all the things we're doing this year, which again, I think speaks a lot about the leadership of the schools and the department. Because these, this means that you have teachers who are learning two new curriculums in some regard in terms of math. They're doing the district literacy at K through 6, which takes, takes time. Again, the pyramid model for the preschool, that bullying curriculum, another new tool. Some may have some familiarity with the older, second step, but the new one, this is very new and it's a different component. We have the advisory model at the middle school, high school, which they're working on developing and making that an important and key part of what middle schools really need. And I think it's working well and teachers are invested in it. The security upgrades, I think that's a big piece. You know, we want to make sure that parents know we take security very seriously. And we just had a lockdown, I don't know what to say, experiment.
Drill.
Drill, thank you. And I met with, with the chief of police and the coordinator afterwards. And they said they, you know, they did remarkably well. I think our experience yesterday at the Smith Academy went remarkably well because we were trained, we know how to do it, our staff handled it beautifully. And, you know, we took care of it, took care of our students well. And again, we had, I can't speak to phone calls because I don't know of any phone calls directly about it to us today. But we had no parents come to the school yesterday during the entire time, which I think speaks tremendously about our parents knowing that we were going to take care of the communication and let them know what's going on. And that means they trust us, which I think is great. We're doing a lot with technology this year. You know, a lot of balls are in the air and we're trying to get them wrapped up and get, get done. But we did increase the bandwidth because we needed to. And, and so we did it and we made it happen. And we've also improved and streamlined our billing for technology and our phones so that we can make it happen and find the resources to do it within our existing budget. So I think that's, that's a big piece. And we turned on the solar power. I can't take credit for that, but it's years in the making. And, you know, I know it took, took us a long time last year to get them out here and make it, make it happen, but it finally happened. And so, you know, that's an exciting piece. And I hope if we get to a place where we do get a new roof, I hope we can talk about solar for, for the elementary school. Because I think it would be exciting. There's educational components that could be there for our kids that can be built into the project and make that happen. You know, it doesn't have to go on the roof. They make nice solar carports now. So it doesn't have to go on the roof. So if we're interested in solar, I think there are other options. And so, you know, we are working hard to reduce expenses as we go forward because we know it's, it's, it's very hard, every year the budget is going to go up. So every year you have to look at ways that you, you can save money. And we have, through the technology, the phones, you know, we're trying to, to save money through different software, like changing over from one student information service to another. That, that works well. We had a increase in our delivery charge. Not out of the blue, but I think everybody's experiencing it. So we worked hard to find another way to deliver. So we, the increase was going to go to 44 cents. So I investigated further and asked, you know, what are you using in the town? And they said, we're using this. And I said, okay, well, let me see if I can use this. And I did, and so I reduced it to 22 cents. So, so these are things that are working in our, in our favor. And, you know, our programs, like the preschool program, it's not self-sufficient, you know, fully, but it's, it's very close. And that's because we worked hard to make it a quality program and attracted tuition students to it. And so, and outside Hatfield students as well. And we also invested in after-school program, before-school program, which does a great job at being a resource for all of our parents, but probably especially our, our school choice parents who need a little option before or after school. And so, you know, kudos to Melissa, who did a lot of the legwork to make that happen and get that going off the ground. And, you know, again, all of our local staff who have stepped up to be a part of that. So I call this our investment budget. And it's because it has about that extra 4% in it to make it happen above-level services. And so the budget proposed is $7,305,965. I did email you or shared with you the full budget document that I base this on, that you have that back up. That increase is $671,950 as a total. So that's a 10.13, which is comparable to the increase that we got last year for this year. So a little, slightly higher, but not very much. The kicker is we are seeing a reduction in use of school choice funds because our, our numbers have leveled off. And in order to keep our, to make sure that we still have a school choice fund, because if that goes away, you're, you're going to be in a real funding crisis. And it's, if we don't increase our school choice, I want to be very clear about this, it's going to go away. Because it doesn't, you know, it's not like an investment in an IRA. It doesn't increase by 8% every year. It just, it goes away if you keep spending it down. So between that going away by about $100,000 and then our ARPA money, our, our version of ARPA money, the ESAR funds that we've had these last three budget cycles, where the town share of that, of the increase is actually larger. So the town share is going up $731,837. And so that's almost a 14%. So that's, that's a slightly higher than the town share increase this year. But beyond the investment budget, we're committed to the school that I think our teachers love and our parents love, which is the same class size, sizes, the number of sections. The two preschools, which you added, I think, just before I arrived, the year before, or was it last year or the first year?
It's Ebb and Flow.
It's Ebb and Flow. And to maintain the electives that we currently have at SA and keep the sports teams as is for FY '23. We do have a buffer in there to look at two middle school teams if we were going to add them. But our, our level services one would have it and our investment budget does have. I missed, I didn't speak to that. Our, the existing software that's part of our learning programs in terms of, that we've just introduced, we're supporting that financially. And we're supporting the PD necessary for our teachers to continue to learn it, which I think is a critical piece of this. And we have some latitude in expanding electives by looking at what kids sign up for and whatever doesn't run, kind of flipping to a newer elective that may be more interesting to them. So things like that can happen within a level services budget. But it happens oftentimes, I don't want to, at the back end, at the end of the year, after schedules have been, you know, made and decisions have been made. And then we, we know now that, you know, oh, we can have two sections of coding. Well, we can do that because that's the interest level and we're not going to run, I don't know, an art section maybe or something. So those, those kinds of things can happen within a level, level services budget as well. I think this budget does stabilize some funding sources in terms of kind of gets us on a roadmap of what we would need annually. would need annually. And that's kind of a key thing to kind of go forward. You know, we have, we're shooting for school choice of 20 additional ones. And if we actually get those in both schools, that would be 40 students, that would help us maintain close to that $900,000 annually. So if we got that, that would help us stabilize school choice. Obviously, we want to help in where the town is in terms of financially and meet where we can. And, you know, ideally, we, this budget, once we get at an investment level, we could stay there, right? You know, because the investments, we could have different investments next year, but at the same levels. We wouldn't have to be adding to that. The preschool revolving, I'm hopeful that we're going to get to a point of somewhat self-sufficiency. We may want to talk about it at some point this year, looking at raising the tuition. It has not been raised in many, 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 many years. And I think it's time to look at that. I would propose that we do that during this budget cycle to help. Our IDA grant is probably going to be about what we expect for next year, so that's a pretty stable number. And circuit breaker, we're still trying to make a final thought about whether or not it'll be about the same, but we're planning on it. And based on certainly our transportation costs this year, especially, we should be able to get pretty close to what we got this year, which was a tad bit more than last year.
The out-of-school, private schools, though, their costs are being increased for next year significantly per the state. So, what's that, 14%?
14%.
Yep. So we only have a couple tuitioned out at the private schools, but there will be an increase there, which we plan for.
So just kind of looking at a snapshot in terms of enrollment with the investment budget, we're proposing, you know, we're going for that 20 at each school, so we hope to increase by 20 students at both schools. Our teacher size, professional staff would increase by three, essentially that school psychologist, the amalgamation of a 1.0 that would be for the electives at Smith Academy, and then the foreign language teacher at the elementary school. And we have the same number of support staff that we're going for, same number of custodians, same number of administrative assistants. We have one less technically administrator because part of the IT Souzer contract, they took over that position. But the level of service, I think, has increased because, again, we have essentially two people that we see almost every day. What I don't show here, because we don't pay for it directly, is food services. And so, that's not here, but I can get you information on that as well. But they are self-sufficient and on the way to being self-sufficient this year with a very small remaining surplus. But it's still up in the air as to whether or not it will be universal food services again next year. I'm very hopeful Massachusetts will continue it. It doesn't look hopeful on the federal side. So, but I think Massachusetts has the resources and probably now has the political will to do it. So that kind of was a nice segue. You know, we are hopeful that there would be some Chapter 70 changes in funding coming from a new governor. They do get to have a couple of extra weeks in putting out their first budget, the House, they call it House One. And so, it's very hopeful. There's a lot of pressure on Governor Healey to look at the inflation of the last three years and catch us up with the inflation factor, which would help us. That money goes directly to the town as a funding source, so it helps all of us. Obviously, our school choice numbers are variable, and I just mentioned about the food service. And I did this out of order, but our ESAR II and ESAR III funding, we'll have a very small portion of our ESAR III funding that will be used in this budget, and you'll see in the lines. And that will fund another year of our speech-language assistant, as it did this year primarily. And, you know, I think this budget supports decisions that we've already made in terms of our competitive wages. We are probably one of very few districts in this area who really has been 98% staffed from the beginning of the year. We did incredibly well. Our administrators worked very hard to get qualified licensed people in our positions. And so, we started the year with really being fully staffed. And that, I credit all of you for making the hard decision and voting a very competitive wage for both our ESPs and our teachers. And that will continue to help us. It's just a fact of financing right now, Chapter 70 has not been rural schools' friend, and it continues not to be. And the Rural Schools' Commission report really has not changed or anybody's opinion about how to fund or add fundings to the, to Chapter 70. And I was on the latest Chapter 70 Foundation review five years ago now, six years ago. And, you know, I'm embarrassed to say that there wasn't much advocacy for rural schools on that committee at all. It was really mostly around low income and special needs. And so, I was wearing my special needs hat at the time, so I had a stronger advocacy there. So it really was who was, you know, on that committee and who gets on these legislative committees in terms of what the advocacy becomes. It's just the nature of where they are. And that is the budget I'm proposing. I know, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's really important. So, questions, comments, thoughts?
I just, I think I just missed it in the presentation. But on slide three, where you say investments are less than 3.6%, I didn't catch what, 3.6% of what?
So, all of the investments that we categorized and I outlined in here is about $270,000. So that $270,000 is about 3.6% of that $7.3 million.
Of the total budget?
Of the total budget.
Of the total budget.
Another way to sort of articulate that, Becca, would be if we did a level service budget, we'd be looking at about a 6% increase. And the, I mean, I think we're talking about...
Like the difference of 4%.
Our investment is very small. I mean, we're calling it, it is an investment. I think we'd get a lot bang for the buck. But let's just be really clear that a level service budget, we would still be looking for a pretty sizable chunk of money to level service. The investment piece is the smaller piece of that.
That's helpful.
Yeah. And while I'm thrilled we got our teachers a good deal so that we could be staffed, I don't think that's because we were disproportionately generous in funding. I mean, they're, they're still like...
You competitively...
We were, like, we, particularly for ESPs, that was fantastic. But, I mean, our percent increase year-on-year for our staff was still pretty fiscally responsible. So I just wouldn't want the impression to be that we, while I would like it to have been...
Right. You didn't give away the store.
We really didn't. I mean, wish that we could have, but I think we all knew that funding's going to be tight.
Right. I know there's a lot to pour over, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Or next time, I'm sure we'll have several more conversations about the budget.
So, at this point, we really have to turn in our budget to town because the Finance Committee needs it. Select Board is ready to see it. Other departments certainly are already out with their budgets. I mean, we did, I mean, it wasn't like we didn't tell them we were talking tonight. And they have some indication of where we're going. So it's not a surprise. But we do need to start getting real about this because we present our budget to the rest of folks in the coming weeks before we meet again.
And just so you know, and I know Adam knows this because he's also sitting on capital planning, there is money in this budget for the technology that we normally have gotten out of capital planning. So we'll obviously make that change if that comes to be. If it doesn't, then it's here. It's harder to increase a budget in March as opposed to reducing it.
So you're saying that if the technology piece is approved for the capital planning, it'll come out of this budget, and our budget that we present is going to decrease?
Right, right.
Correct. So historically, it's been handled in capital because it's greater than a $10,000 expenditure. It's all the same thing. But it's one of those things because it's a regular purchase, it just kind of becomes an issue. But I don't think we can go into next year without having Chromebooks, so.
Right.
It does also cause the issue, though, if it somehow doesn't come out of capital planning, if they defer it to our regular budget. And then, the town is, you know, very openly discussing the need for an override. And then, if perchance the override failed, it would be another chunk of money that we then have to find out of our regular operational budget that we don't normally.
Sure. Right, right.
Lightheartedly, I do appreciate that you unwittingly used the picture of my son being scared of the dog.
I'm sorry. I did not. I don't know any of the names of any of the students in those pictures.
They all gave consent.
They all gave consent. I did ask that.
I was looking at it lovingly.
Standing back from afar.
Just to give a little bit of context, this is probably not new news, but the latest information on DESI that looks at a per pupil expenditure, which compares district to district across the state, the most recent year they have is 2021. And last year, we had taken a look at 2020 as well because that's part of looking at how competitive are we and how, what a great value we are. And so, right now, while our per pupil expenditure did go up between 2020 and 2021, and our increase per pupil was a little bit higher than our neighbors, we are still, our spending rank out of about 400 districts is 374. And just to keep in mind, that is a cost per student that we spend, that's not a total budget number. So this is the most apples to apples, because obviously, some districts are huge and have so many students, we wouldn't want to compare. On a per pupil basis, to me, the logic would be that we would over-index because our fixed costs of having administration or, you know, if you have a principal for two students, you split that principal's cost over two students. If you have a principal for 200 students, the salary gets... So our small district, one would think, would be a little bit higher on a state-ranking kind of basis because our fixed costs are not as broadly shared. But we aren't there. So relative to Amherst, to Mohawk Trail, to Pioneer Valley, to Frontier, to Hadley, Northampton, with Springfield, South Hadley, we're well below. So, and I'm not saying, you know, Amherst spends about $26,000 per student, and I'm not suggesting that we're Amherst. But South Hadley spends 16, and, you know, West Springfield spends over 16, Northampton's over 17, Frontier is almost $19,000. And they're over that now, I'm sure, but this was 21 numbers, and we're down at $15,000 per student. So when we look at level services and what we're spending compared to what's going on elsewhere, it's just, we need to be mindful that if we don't continue to invest in our programs, it does not bode well for our district. The area regional schools, the average per student spend is $22,194. And that's taking Mohawk, Pioneer, and Frontier and finding the average of them, just as a, I think sometimes at budget season, we hear the idea that, oh, if we would just regionalize, it would be cheaper. And I just want to disabuse us of that. I don't think it would be cheaper. So, if we use the per pupil expenditures as our way of judging that. So, just a little data from DESI.
And with that number, we have competitive sports teams, we have competitive academics in terms of kids going on college and being successful. You know, we're getting a good bang for our dollar here in Hattie Field.
It's a tremendous value, for sure. But I think the committee needs to be armed with the reality that when we're asking for a little bit more, we're asking for that in the context of we need to stay competitive and keep our students and keep our school choice students coming. And to do that, we need to make sure that we're comparably providing programs. Hence, a 3.6% investment, or about $270K. Technically, do we need to vote on this tonight to move this forward?
No.
Because we have to vote before it goes to town.
Correct.
So, anything you guys want to add in before we sit in front of Finance Committee and Select Board?
I just want to make sure. There was an addition that had transportation for school choice. This one does not.
Well, if we were to look at that option, we could always consider a fee, transportation fee.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't think we're anywhere near proposing that for the next school year, anyway.
Right. Or if we, yeah. I was thinking, if we had success with the technology in the capital budget before we voted the budget, we could move that money to transportation.
While I like it as a service, having seen at least some preliminary numbers, I'm concerned if we would, if the juice is worth the squeeze. It's a lovely thing to do, but could we get enough students coming in to make it worthwhile? So, because not only would it, it's a chunk of change. So...
A call just today of the elementary school, the family.
Asking if we provided transportation for school choice. So, I'm just, that was one data point. It happened today. So, I think it is out, although their location wasn't the direction necessarily we were looking to do. But it's a really hard predictor. It might be something, if we have that information night, if there are, that that may be a good pool to survey at that moment.
I was going to put it on our school choice form.
Sure.
We talked about that at Budget Subcommittee as well, like, starting to take the inventory. I think there are probably some other steps we could do along the way. Like, how could we help school choice families facilitate ride-sharing? How could we, like, there are things that would be no cost to us that we might look at, how do we just help coordinate that? I mean, even if it was a provided fee-based thing, I mean, it's still kind of like aftercare. It pays for itself. It's a huge service. It's really worthwhile. We could find some ways to do that. I think finding the bussing service might challenge in and of itself right now.
Right.
The van driver.
Well, that's it. I mean, our own bus company said they do not have a bus and they do not have a driver. I mean, there are other companies out there, but that was ... But that was part of my decision to pull it out, is our current company couldn't do it.
So promising that immediately may be tough. However, it may be something we build to. And as we think about if the investment this round is more curriculum-based, the investment the following year? Like, do we find a way that we can build into some of that?
And we talked about, too, right, creating like open houses or events where school choice families could come and then also build relationships with each other that might also foster relationships that would then make the transportation...
Possible.
Can you talk to, like, you know, we have, we talked about the specific investments for making the specific additions to the curriculum and stuff that we're making. And, you know, we like those for now, but those are changeable because we needed at least something for budgetary purposes. Can you talk or speak to at all the ideas that were perhaps left on the chalkboard in the discussions? Not in too much detail, but just like, you know, so that the town and the rest of the committee members have an idea of what was...
I know you sent some things today. They were a little more pie in the sky that they were talking about. I mean, I'm trying to think, what else did we talk about? Because there really weren't other pieces because they were so focused around the District Improvement Plan. I'm drawing a blank. Can you think of other things that we talked about adding this year?
I think just, there's a lot in the technology, website, data, dashboard world, which is kind of all wrapped together.
Yeah.
But I know that side of it, and I know by switching the, we might have some other data options in, when we switch our student service or student...
Information.
Information.
Yeah.
So I know, I think that's all wrapped up in those other improvements naturally. I don't think there was any other big item that wasn't already discussed.
Right. I mean, there's, we could always have, you know, an additional para in the budget just so that we have the swing as far as, you know, if an event happens, that money. But we don't. So...
I don't think anybody got too high on this. Like, everybody really honed in from the get-go, was my impression.
Yeah.
Like, very, very fiscally responsible. Brainstorming. Ready for the phone calls?
So we don't need to vote on this for now, or?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay. Policy Subcommittee.
Right.
I just went up. It's 9:19. We're good?
Yeah. So you may notice in your update, we have links embedded in links. So I appreciate everyone's willingness to work with this technology. First, we have policy GDC and GDD. So these were the leaves and absences for non-union, non-contract staff as well as the support staff, vacations, and holidays for non-union, non-contract staff. So this is the third reading. We received some very minor sort of grammatical edits at the last meeting. And I did receive one grammatical communication, just about some very small edits. But otherwise, I think we are prepared to vote pending any further feedback from committee members.
Is there a motion to approve GDC, GDD, leaves and absences for non-union, non-contract staff?
I will make a motion to accept GDC, GDD.
I'll second. Okay. Any conversation, any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Policy Committee, for that new policy. And then BDE?
Yep. So this is the second reading of our Subcommittee's and Representative Appointments policy. We did take the feedback of the committee from the last meeting, reorganized a couple of things. We did make some subheadings so that you, it's more clearly defined, what is a Subcommittee and what is a Representative Appointment. So we are open to any feedback from the committee. But from a Policy Subcommittee standpoint, because this really has to do with our own internal processes, we are open to a vote tonight should votes want.
I think I would just want to point out that previously known as Budget Advisory or Budget Subcommittee was renamed to School Finance. That makes sense and aligns well.
And we also moved multi-year maintenance to Appointment instead of Subcommittee.
I just have one question. We have a representative to comprehensive planning, right, Master Plan?
Yes.
Yes. So we also, because that is not like an every single year, all the time appointment, we just basically said that additional representative appointments are established as deemed necessary. But the ones that we listed are ones that tend to be sort of year to year.
Okay.
The same would apply, for example, when we've had superintendent searches. That's a Subcommittee that can just be created ad hoc, but it's not a permanent Subcommittee.
CPAC, isn't there one, somebody that...
Yeah, that's me.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking that we have...
Formally sit on that as a committee member, though? I'm kind of just like a liaison.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to double check. We had it in the right, wherever it need to be.
Is there a motion to approve or any amendments to BDE?
Oh, I'm sorry. One other thing I just would like to emphasize is that in passing BDE, our intention is to eliminate policy BD-B-E, which was basically a list of the Subcommittees. We just embedded it together. So we would just like those things to happen, sort of concurrent.
I will make a motion to approve BDE, Subcommittees and Representative Appointments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Let's check.
But then we also need the vote to eliminate the BDE-E.
Okay.
Thank you.
Officially.
I will second that motion.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So BDE-E?
Yes.
Okay. Just saying that again for Michael's recording purposes. Okay.
It's there in the...
It was spectacular in Subcommittee to talk about.
Okay. So the last thing on our agenda this evening, we'll be tabling in the executive session tonight, is the Superintendent Goals Update. And so this is part of our business calendar to have a mid-year check-in for the superintendent because our final review will happen in May. So that we will be issuing that report before town elections. Just to make sure that we're establishing that plan.
You want me to highlight anything, or?
It's up to you what you would like to do.
I just want to respect your time. So I wrote a few things based on what I've been doing on the goals. My professional goal around working on race equity and diversity inclusion. I am taking this course, and thank you very much for your support on that. It's been very interesting, very enlightening. It's, it really is an eye-opening conversation around race and inclusion and equity. Again, some of the, you know, learning some of the language. You know, the book we are reading is called "Me and White Supremacy", which comes across as a very harsh... When I read the title, I was like, what have I gotten myself into? But it's really a very, soft is not the right word, but a very eclectic way to help readers understand the different ways that everybody talks about race and needs to talk about race in very point-blank ways so that people get comfortable with the challenges that we have in this country around race. And so right now, we did three full-day presentations in which we were together. There's over 120 of us taking this course. It's led by two Harvard professors, both of whom I've had done work with in the past, so I'm familiar with them. And, but it's, it's very in-your-face. I mean, you know, as someone who's just been aware, you know, of what I thought was inclusion and what I knew about race, it's, you're never too old to think about how to make sure that you're being fair and equitable and inclusive. And most recently, we've been in these smaller breakout groups. I'm in a group of about 10, 10 other colleagues. And it's superintendent, directors of curriculum, mostly central office admin people, assistant superintendents, and it's facilitated by members of, I think they're almost all retired superintendents. Ours is. And so our focus in these small groups is really to kind of talk about how are we going to lead the conversation within our district? And how to get it started and how to be looking at it. And I talked about, you know, like, for example, last year, we developed the policy review tool. Not using it yet, but we have it. And, you know, I thought that was a great start to think about that. More recently, we've been talking about how to frame conversations as ways to get started. And I've put it on our agenda for the leadership. And I'm trying to think of ways to, you know, broaden this out to conversations with our teachers. One of the hardest parts about this course is that they start with, you really have to sort of figure out your own identity in terms of understanding where you are in the conversation. And that was much of our first two sessions, as full-day sessions. And I'll tell you, that was, you know how some courses you go to and you're, you know, like really tired by the end of the day? Because you've really got to think and talk about yourself in ways that you've never really talked about yourself. I don't think of myself as having an identity other than, my wife used to say, and now I have a coffee cup to prove it, don't use your superintendent voice with me. And, you know, things like that. And I, so those are parts of your identity. You're identifying your role, your job, you're a father, you're a brother, you're whatever, you know. And so, but, you know, they try to get you to think about all the different ways. You're white, you're, you know, you're in low income, high income, whatever, you know, and all the different ways that people can describe you. And it's just very hard. It's very difficult to talk about. It's very sensitive. And they're trying, you're basically teaching us, and I'm beginning to figure out ways to think about it and talk about it, of how to introduce the conversation so that we can get to people identifying, and this is the critical piece for all of us as educators, is where do we see it when we hear it and read it in our curriculum or in our interactions with students? You know, different ways that we can help people just feel belonging in the community that they're in, whether by choice or because that's where they live and they have to go to those schools? How do you make them feel belong? And because without belonging, you can't really get comfortable enough to learn. And that's ultimately what you want to have, is you want kids and faculty and staff to be comfortable, to be able to learn, to teach, to engage. And you can't do that if you're constantly worried about others who are looking at your identity and asking, you know, do you fit here? Do you belong here? And, you know, it's everything, and just speaking about myself, I've heard myself say it. Even when you say those kids or those people, you know, using that terminology, you do a double take. I do a double take. You know, it's like, what did I just say? You know, we've had a couple instances this year, ageism, you know, looking at, you know, it just doesn't have to be about color. It's, you know, we've been talking about religion. You know, how do we figure out ways to make people feel more inclusive and want to be inclusive and be different at the same time? Right? We want people to be comfortable in their own identity and be an engaged member of our learning community. So it's been eye-opening and scary at times, but very necessary to talk about and to do. Professional goal for finance, you know, this is always the toughest piece. You know, I want all of you to know, what I'm trying to do is not only just build a budget, but I'm also trying to build systems within the office so that we have historical records, so that we have a place where we can go to and look at and do some analysis. And so with each budget that I do here, I want people to be able to have that information so they can see, you know, where have we made changes and investments and so forth. So, you know, this is something that I enjoy doing. And, you know, I hope that it helps us do some decision-making and with the right numbers, come out with a good decision in terms of being able to endorse it at Town Meeting Floor and get it passed. So I'm very hopeful that you see that as well. And then with, really with Christie's help, I really worked hard on the communication plan. It's gone through a lot of iterations and still has room to grow. But, you know, I think that out of my, out of all of our offices, you know, it's, communication is really 90% of our job, right? I mean, if we don't get a message out, we don't get buy-in. We don't, we don't get people to want to be here. And so, you know, it's something that I continue to work on and have a lot to learn. Those are my updates.
Do you want to speak a little bit about the dashboard?
Yeah, I wish I can say more about it. We have, it's sort of been on the back burner because we haven't gotten to the website piece because I don't want to build it for an antiquated system. And frankly, we can't do it on the current system that we have. But we have our list. We've got to narrow it down to the areas that we want to focus in on. These would be the telltale signs. A lot of it would be the things out of our DIP that we've already done. So, you know, we'll track things like school choice enrollment. We'll track overall enrollment. We'll track, you know, our reading performance, our math performance, and things like that that is objective data that will come forward, what people want to look at. Even things that, as they come up, we, you know, my hope is that we're going to create a dashboard that's actually somewhat fluid in that we can, you know, based on the historical data that I was just talking about, as we're having conversations in our community, we can add to our dashboard so that the data is there and people can look at it. Because again, you can't, you can anticipate some, most of the time, what you think is important data. But as new conversations need to happen, you want to get that data out in front of people. So, you know, for example, you know, we had a lockdown. Well, how many lockdowns do we have in a year? How many shelters and places do we have? You know, so that may become, you know, something that we add to our lexicon so that, in our dashboard, so that people can see that, you know, it's not that many. It's not anything you have to be concerned about. It's there.
Does this filter down to the classroom level? So there's a parent-teacher conference that they have a chance, like, is it that?
Well, it's district data. It's more, more macro, definitely. But, you know, in terms of, you know, things that would affect the classroom would be like staffing. Well, we have zero vacancies, you know, teaching vacancies right now. So that might be something we include as a dashboard point. And again, I would take the feedback from the school committee and the administrators as to what, what's the information that we think is current that people want to know about so that they get it, so that they're informed when they rush to talk about us, right?
Questions in the committee? Maybe it just didn't stick with me. Sorry. So, check in the box. DESI would be proud. Okay. With no additional questions there, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor?
A little too quick.
Aye.
Hi. Thank you very much.
Everybody.